Welcome, everyone. For those who may not know me, I'm Lynn Bondrun. I'm the Chair of the Select Board. And with us on the Select Board tonight are Margo Stone. Most of you know Margo and Paul Pierce. Hope Blucher couldn't be here tonight. She had a family obligation. And Doug might come in. I'm not sure. Also with us tonight is John Thrasher, who's our Attorney for the Town of Danby. We've invited the public to the special meeting to have the opportunity to learn more about the proposed facility on Colvin Hill called Path at Stone Summit. Is that correct?
Yes.
And we all want to be sure that it will be a safe environment for...
You're having trouble hearing me?
Oh, now you're in trouble. How's that? Better? All right. Okay. So, we've invited the public here for a special meeting to have the opportunity to learn more about the proposed facility on Colvin Hill called Path at Stone Summit. We want to be sure that it's a safe environment for all, the residents and neighbors, and that we want to fully assess any impact it may have on what we all know to be limited town resources. Dr. April Stein, who has applied through the Green Mountain Care Board to operate this facility, has graciously and enthusiastically accepted our invitation to tell us more about the facility and to answer reasonable questions. She is not required by any licensing process to do this. She is here voluntarily. Our job is to ask questions and to listen to responses. And if Dr. Stein has questions for us, we can share our knowledge of our town and its As many of you know who were at the last Select Board meeting, and I'd like to reiterate, we, the Select Board, do not have a decision-making role in the review process for this facility. The process for opening this kind of and size of facility is that an applicant applies to the Green Mountain Care Board, who makes the determination as to whether they need a certificate of need. As I understand it, the certificate of need you would need, if the program's annual expenses are less than $500,000 and the startup capital costs are under $1.5 million, you would not need a certificate of need. In that case, the facility gets reviewed by the State's Department of Disabilities, Aging, and Independent Living. And I'm sure that April and her team can tell us where they are in that process when they have a chance to speak. I had asked Brad Bender to moderate this meeting, and he had a last-minute family obligation and is unable to be here. So, I will facilitate, which I feel I can do since there's no action taken by the Select Board. I think I can be in this role, and I'll do my best. We would like to allow for about an hour and a half. We will watch the time. It's a hot night. We want to be respectful of everybody. And I'd like to open it up by giving 15 minutes or so to Dr. Stein to introduce her colleagues and to tell you all about the program and where it stands in the review process. Then I'll open it up to questions. In the interest of allowing, we have a lot of people here, and in the interest of allowing everyone who wants to ask a question to do so, I'm going to keep it to one follow-up question. Because we've got PEG TV here tonight, and in order to record, we have limited microphones, we're going to ask people to come to the podium to ask their questions. If there's time, we can go around again. We'll see how many people have questions and how we move along. Also, at the very end, I would like to leave 10 or 15 minutes in case April and her colleagues have some questions for us as a community. So if that sounds like a process, we can begin.
Thank you. I am April Stein. I am the Director of Path at Stone Summit. Can everyone hear me? Oh, no. Okay, hold on. I'm not very good at that. Can you hear me now?
No.
Slide it closer.
Okay. I am April Stein. Yeah. I'm April Stein. I'm the Director of the Path at Stone Summit and also its owner. Sitting next to me is Mike Munson, who is our Counsel, and Jerry Rudd, who is our Chief Operating Officer and on staff. Can people hear? So, I wanted to introduce myself a little bit and then, as Lynn said, answer questions. The first thing I want to do is tell you a little bit about me and PATH, and hopefully assuage some of the anxiety that I know people are having about the program. So, I'm a licensed clinical psychologist. I have been in practice for close to 25 years, which is a little embarrassing, I think. That's just my age, but I've been, I was licensed in 1991. And most of my career has been spent working with young adults in one capacity or another. I went to college here in Vermont. I went to Bennington College and have always had the dream of going back to Vermont. So, I have lived here now for about 11 years and previously for six years before moving on to get my graduate degree. And again, as I said, most of my career has been spent working with young adults and trying to help them figure out who they are and how they can develop into active and engaged members of our community. My specialty is in mood disorders, anxiety and depression. And one of the things that I found as I was working with young adults and as my role as the Director of Psychological Services at Bennington College currently, is that there are very many young adults in our communities who are desperately seeking help for anxiety and depression and who actually are doing a tremendous amount of work to get that help, but somehow are still having problems with failure to launch or failures to transition into adulthood. And so, as I talk to them, several significant problems always came up. Often, there were young adults who had gone away and actually tried to go to a hospital and get treatment. There were young adults who had tried to go to college and get treatment. And one of the things that happened is that they would go away. People are looking, can you hear me? Okay, good. They would go away, and then they would end up coming back to the very same place that brought the problems to begin. Either problems with their families at home, problems with, if people have been in AA, problems with people, places, and things, they would go right back into the same community that they were trying so hard to break out of, troubled issues. So, what we decided to do is we talked to a number of my colleagues and said, what would be the thing that would actually help young adults most transition effectively if they can't make it in college, if they can't make it in the workplace? And we decided, looking at all of the work that I've done in patient facilities, looking at work that Jerry's done in residential facilities, we decided that the thing that is missing most in all of the next step programs that I know of are the program that emphasizes what we call vocational rehabilitation. It means the ability for people to join a community, work in a community, and actually have a long-term place where they can become members of both the home community and hopefully a community that's larger than that. And so, we decided to start Path at Stone Summit. Path, I want to say, first of all, there was a really lovely letter written by Oliver, who I don't think is here tonight, in which he's, I was very moved by his thoughts about how we could help as a, how we should welcome a rehab program into our community, but I want to emphasize that we are not a rehabilitation program. Path at, well, we're not a substance abuse rehabilitation program. We are a vocational rehabilitation program with the emphasis on helping people learn how they can get back into school or jobs. We are taking people who are, we do not take active substance abuse people. We are working to help people who have struggled with mood disorders, anxiety disorders, bipolar disorder, find a way of relearning how to function. And the way we do that is in three tiers. The first tier is, basically, these people will come to our community, and for four to six weeks, they will stay in our community, working on our residence, which is a farm-like residence, working with our animals, working in our garden, working in our housework, and going to groups all day where they will learn basic skills of living. Things like managing your depression, managing your anxiety, job skills training, leisure skills training, because one of the things we really found in this community was that there are so many people who literally don't know how to have fun. How do you learn how to have healthy, appropriate fun? So, they will spend six weeks in that facility, during which time we will be working with them with individual therapy, with vocational rehabilitation services, with job coaching-type skills. And when they are ready, we will be helping them find volunteer jobs in the local area in which they can start practicing these skills in the real world. They will be, that they will be going with a job coach initially, and then, as they, and then, as they feel more comfortable, going by themselves to work in a job for between 10 and 20 hours per week, and then come home to our facility at night, where they will continue to work with their therapist, work in their, in their home community, be supported by the home community. And as they progress between, we're hoping that people stay between five to six months. As they progress in the community and feel like they are really making tremendous progress, we will help them go home, but with the skills they need. Help them find a job from where they came from, if they want to. Maybe they all found a job here and want to stay, but help them progress so that they can live independently. We are not going to take anyone who will not be able, when they leave, to function effectively fully in a community. I know that there are some concerns about security. We will have on staff, somebody who will be on staff, two people will be on staff at any given time, 24 hours a day. I know that there were some questions about cars. Residents will be permitted to have cars on a very specific basis after, after they finish the first tier, and that will only be if they are going to a job that requires that they cannot get their buy-offs in our circuit. That will also only be after they have been, worked with the team and found that they can be responsible. And we will not ever have residents have more than two cars inside a club. Oh, thank you so much. And we are going to be a tiny facility, mostly because we feel that having a community, having a community feel and a home-like atmosphere is tremendously important. So, we are starting with four residents. At most, we will have eight. We will never go above eight residents in the house. The house has five bedrooms. We will have a suite in which two, two people will share two rooms. So, we'll be, two rooms will have two people each, and then they have a suite where three people will be living. And then we have a handicap accessible room in case we have an additional person. That is when we are at full capacity. Anything else I'm forgetting?
Staff will live there.
Staff will live there, on site.
Emergency response.
Emergency response. I know that there were some concerns about emergency response. The first thing I want to say is that we are not anticipating that the people we have coming to stay with us will ever need any kind of emergency services any more than you and I would. We are not taking people who are, have any kind of violent record. We are not taking people who are any, who are actively using substances or who have used substances in 30 days. We are not taking people who we think are going to be either danger to themselves or the community. So, frankly, they're going to need emergency services, just as anyone else in our community would. However, we will have staff available. That's why we have two staff on at all times, who will be able to take somebody and transport them in an emergency.
Security.
Oh, thank you.
Leaving the house.
Yes. Because, because we are a residential facility, and by the way, we're called a therapeutic community, is what we would be licensed under, we do have a lot of restrictions on how people come and go. Frankly, this is not because we think that they are in any danger to a community or in any danger to themselves, but because we are responsible for them while they're with us. So, we have a curfew. People are not in the first tier, that's the six weeks, are not permitted to leave the house without staff or unless they are going to be going someplace or have a pass. Other than that, they will be with us at all times in the facility. We have a curfew for people who are on a different tier of 9:30 at night. Everyone needs to be in and accounted for. We also have a security system in place that tells us if people leave their rooms after a certain, after a certain time at night. And the reason we have that is, again, not because we're worried about people doing anything illegal or violent, but frankly, because one of the things that happens with young adults that we are afraid of is that people tend to co-mingle. And we have strict rules about people having, people having special relationships. They're supposed to have relationships with everybody. So, you got to answer everything now? Absolutely. Okay.
Maybe you could just also please tell us where things are in the licensing process?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that question.
I'm so sorry. It's supposed to be like, okay.
So, in Vermont, therapeutic community residences, I speak pretty loud, you probably don't need this, are licensed, as Lynn said, by the Department of Disabilities, Aging, and Independent Living, Department of Licensing and Protection. They have a special set of regulations and a special process for licensing therapeutic community residences, which is what this is. So, that application has been submitted, and once PATH obtains a certificate of occupancy, a representative from Licensing and Protection will come down, will meet with April, and the staff will go over all of the policies and procedures of the organization. We'll do a walkthrough. And at that point, the regulatory entity can make suggestions or requirements that PATH will then have to fulfill before it can get its license. So, they have reviewed the application packet, and I've been working with them regularly, providing them information that they need. The regulations specify what documents they need to be included in the application, including background checks of the employees and letters of recommendation for April, a floor plan of the house and the like. Obviously, a certificate of occupancy is a requirement, which means we've been working with the Division of Fire Safety on code compliance issues. That would be ADA compliance as well as life safety code, fire code compliance. So, we have an architect. His name is Gary Corey, and he's with Centerline Architects in Bennington. He's been working directly with Butch at Division of Fire Safety. They've done a walkthrough of the house already, and everything from the height of banisters to the existence of railing, to a sprinkler system, which is going to be installed, ADA ramps and the like. We're working with them on every aspect of the renovation. And so, that's progressing. And as Lynn said, these are regulatory entities, and as a therapeutic community residence, because it's a healthcare facility, any new healthcare facility in the state of Vermont has to go through the certificate of need process with the Green Mountain Care Board. And the first step in that process is what's called a letter of intent, and it's an application with a huge amount of information, including projected expenses. And we submitted a letter of intent to the Green Mountain Care Board back in March, and that included a narrative summary. Our entire submission is online. You can find it on the Green Mountain Care Board website. Some of you probably already have it. Some of you may have brought it tonight. But there is a seven-page narrative description of the program, and there were submissions that dealt with staffing and capital expense projections and the like. And Lynn was exactly right. There is a jurisdictional requirement of $500,000 plus in annual operating expenses before they require you to go through the full certificate of need process. And so, in working with our CPA, we submitted those expense projections. They were well under $500,000 annually, as April said. It's a, it's a small, it's a small residential care facility. And as a result of that, the Green Mountain Care Board issued a no jurisdiction letter, which said you do not need to go the next step in the certificate of need process. That doesn't mean we won't be licensed. We have to go through the whole licensing process with the Division of Licensing and Protection, as all therapeutic community residences do. I hope I've answered your question.
Thank you. I think that gives us a basis to begin. So, I'd like to open it up to questions. And again, if people come up here, so that everybody can hear you. Hope you can hear me still. And, and please restrict it to maybe one follow-up question. We're looking for some dialogue, but we do want to make time for other people to speak. If, in fact, other people don't want to, then we can change up the rules a little bit. But let's give it up. So, who would like to start? Why don't you please give your name first, Brian?
Sure. I'm Brian Keating, 1474 Colvin Hill Road in Danby. Couple of things. I'm going to make it short because I don't, I have a lot here, and I can leave this with you, and you can get back to me or get back to Lynn with some answers on it. I reviewed your narrative, and I reviewed your budget. And it's under, it's under the $500,000 for the third year, which is $462,000. In my opinion, there's not enough money in here. You've, you've, you've said in your narrative you have a triple net lease, as an example. And I'll just make one example. The budget does not include real estate taxes, maintenance, or insurance. So, those three items are missing from your $462,000 annual budget. Your allowance for food allows for a dollar thirty-six per meal, according to this number, based on eight residents. And the third, the third thing that I want to bring up, the inconsistency, you said at the house visit, which was very nice, that there would never be more than eight residents. You said it again tonight. But in the narrative, it says that you may go to 10 at some point. So, eight is not 10. That's a big difference. So, so why, you know, I'll just, I'll throw these out here, and again, I'll leave this with you, and you guys can respond to it, and, you know, I didn't think, I didn't know if you saw it already, but go through it. If you could get back to Lynn. In general, I just don't think that the budget, in any way, shape, or form, can, it reflects what you're really going to have to spend. I received from Lynn some supplemental information from Mr. Munson that added more staff and more money, which, again, is not reflected in that budget. There are, it just, the numbers just don't add up. And what my concern is, again, you know, I spoke to the Chairman of the Green Mountain Care Board, and he didn't seem too concerned about that. But what that, to me, means is if you can't accurately prepare a budget to run a facility, how can you run a facility? That's my concern. So, again, that's my, those are my questions. Anybody else wants to come up?
We will get back to you with most of those because there are too many to answer all at once, but I can tell you that we had our CPA go through our, our budget, so.
Another question?
What about the other question? I was just curious.
I can't answer all of them.
It's either eight or 10.
It will be, it will be an eight. This was, this was...
The narrative is incorrect.
Yes. This was written three months ago as we were preparing and thinking about our program. This has obviously gone into some transition. You will never go above eight people.
Will you be submitting a correction to the narrative?
I don't think so.
One, one isn't required, okay? But...
It may not be required, but it, it may be a useful thing to consider.
Yeah. I can just say that if PATH's operating expenses change, or they go above $500,000, we're required by law to submit that information to the Green Mountain Care Board, and we will do so. But at this time, our CPA calculated the projected expenditures for this project. We submitted them to the Green Mountain Care Board. The Green Mountain Care Board found them to be reasonable. And those expenditure projections haven't changed, although a couple of other details in the narrative, as it was written on March 18th, have changed.
Would you like, you're next in line? Please state your name.
David Middleton, 1399 Raymond Road. I just have a observation that follows my question. The location you've chosen is remote. Recognize, you can't argue that. It's, it's remote. Remote to the point where maybe inaccessible in a winter that we know up there. And it's remote also in the sense of, of community, in that it's not handy, there's no public transportation, there's no main road, and Danby is a community, probably safe to say, that is bereft of economic opportunity, of just a small number of, of working businesses here. And yet, you chose this location, and in your narrative, you emphasize the role that community plays in your therapeutic responses. So, that, to me, makes me curious as to why the physical remoteness, which would seem to be for, just for the health of your, of your, of your community, of your patients, 45 minutes, 50 minutes to a hospital, why did you choose that remoteness of the, of the building, and why Danby with, which seems to be, does not have any of the requirements that you seem to be emphasizing in a community such as Bennington or Rutland that would have so much more opportunity for your, for your patients?
Actually, this one I can answer. So, yes, Danby is very remote. And it was actually, I will be blunt, not my first choice of where we were going to be, for several reasons. One, we do have a van that will be transporting our people places, but it is, it is a trek for us, and I would have preferred to be a little bit closer. Frankly, I found the house as I was driving around enjoying Vermont and fell in love with it and thought it would be a perfect, perfect location in terms of everything else. The first part of our program is we're trying to emphasize a community inside of ourselves, and what we really want to do is have some animals, have a farm, have, a gentleman's farm, some animals for people to take care of, have a community feeling in which people are really in a safe parcel of land, somewhat remote from, from other, other activity. And that's why when we saw the house, we thought it would be perfect. I must say that I did look at several other places closer to Bennington and Manchester, and for logistical reasons, they fell through. My first choice was actually in Wilmington. It's a beautiful house, and we just needed way too much work. So, that's the answer.
Do I get a follow-up?
You do.
Follow-up? That was, thank you. The other part is the sense of community is, with such animosity of your neighbors, immediate and not so, how, how does, how do you plan on forwarding that, that gap to become a part of the community when you are already not wanted?
You know, I need to say that I did not anticipate such animosity. I was, I'm really sort of surprised and saddened by it. And, surprised and saddened by it. So, I did not anticipate that. It was something we did not even think was going to be a problem, and I wish it weren't true. I know that people have said to me, "Danby is a place where people want to be left alone." And I guess if people really want to be left alone, they will not need to deal with us. We will, we are going to stay to ourselves if people don't want us around, and we do have volunteer positions in other locations, so we'll go there. I'm hoping that, that people, as they get to know us and realize that this is not a frightening place, or that we are not bad people, or trying to do something, I'm not quite sure what, but that that will change in time.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm going to get some water because I'm thirsty.
We've got a next speaker coming up.
Michael, please, 382 Staples Road. So, you, you've obviously, you've obviously thought about this in terms of location and risks and benefits to different sites. So, tell the audience, what is the benefit to the Town of Danby and our citizens with you coming to our town?
You know, I very much hope. When I first saw Danby and realized things like the library is only closed for two, it was only open for very short periods of time, I was actually hoping that we could join the town and be more active members of the community, offer volunteer services at the library, offer volunteer services if they were needed places. So, that was one hope, one thought about it. The other was that we were taking a distressed property and hopefully making it beautiful and better.
And have you considered what the risk of your coming to the community has been, and what, what that would entail?
I'm not sure, but if you want to tell me about some risks, I think...
Well, as a homeowner and coming into a community with a concern about a facility such as this, as a prospective buyer in the future, I might not want to buy a house near a facility like that. And so, if other people are coming to look at the Town of Danby and they have a similar situation, then the demand for our housing goes down and subsequently our prices. And that then inflicts the tax base and the receipts that the town has to work with, and so I consider that a harm and a risk to your being here.
I am not a CPA. I would be surprised if, if our facility, which is beautiful and small, would do that, but I can't answer that question. So, thank you.
Andrew Wallace, 1713 Colvin Hill Road, just down the road from you. Sorry, I'm used to talking and nodding to microphones, normally talking like this. Andrew Wallace, 1713 Colvin Hill. I'm of two minds of this. First mind is, I believe that a facility like this is needed and has a place. First mind is, I believe that a facility like this is needed and has a place. My second mind, and I'm ashamed to say this in some ways, is I'm getting the feeling of not in my backyard. That's my issue. I'm not a full-time resident. We are not there nearly as much as I want to be. It has been a vacation, it has been a vacation house for my family since sixty-nine. It's empty a lot of the time. And my concern, my question, my first question is, what is going to be, what process are you going to have in order to make sure that the residents that are in this facility are not an issue for the community, not going to be going out to my barn and drinking beers, which has happened in one of my barns? I've gone and found mattresses and dozens of beer cans.
That I can answer.
Please do.
So, and again, I, I really don't, I'm doctor of bullshit of God, so we are a facility which is opening itself up to voluntary people. No one can come there without going through a very, I had a student the other day tell me that my application process was actually harder than college. We really are vetting people, I hate that word, so I almost stopped myself, sorry, but we are going to have people go through a very, very strict admissions process for coming. We are trying to build a community. Therefore, we cannot have students who have criminal, who have violent criminal records or are going to be burglizing our neighbors. We cannot have students who are going to be drinking beer or bringing any substances into a program that doesn't allow substances, and that if it did, would actually be detrimental to some of the residents there. We cannot have residents who are not wanting to come there and work. Any resident that breaks any number of our very long laws will be asked to leave, and people are not going to want to be asked to leave because they're trying to get better. And if they do break the law, they will be asked to leave. Or a rule, they'll be asked to leave. We also do have a security system in place which will tell us if anybody leaves the property, and we'll make sure that that person is found, and if needed to, we will go after them, but that is not going to, I think, be an issue. We also have staff on twenty-four hours a day who are going to be very aware of coming and going, so residents. Any resident that uses substances while in our program will be asked to leave immediately.
Okay. My follow-up to that is, the, I realize that this is a voluntary program, and for the first month of a tier-one, seven fifty a day, twenty-two-five a month, for that first thirty days, if my math is correct. They're there voluntarily, but how are, I'm worried about basically rich parents sending their troubled kids off to the wilds. It's, same issue. This is not an inexpensive facility. Can you explain a little bit as to how, as to how that benefits your community and our community when people, parents, or these students, it just seems, in some ways, it doesn't seem like it's enough money? And at the same time, per person, per day, it seems like a large chunk of money. Does that make sense?
I get half of it and not the other half.
That's fine, so do I.
But, but basically, I, I will tell you actually that in terms of programs like this, it's actually in the median range. They're, we're actually a little below average cost because we try to keep it affordable. We do not take insurance, but we will be helping people get insurance. We just don't take insurance because anyone who has been in a hospital or tried to get insurance benefits knows that what happens is after two days, you go to the hospital and they kick you out, and we don't want our residents to be worried about that. I wish, it was actually the reason the transitional...
Microphone.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. It's actually the reason we had the transitional beds to begin with, so that we was hoping we could open it up to more people, but it was just not important. Oh, I'm so sorry. I can't talk to two people at once.
Talk to them, talk to them.
So, so, we do know that it is an expensive program. It's actually not as expensive as other programs. And I think your other question was, why would people spend that money if their kids were in real trouble? Is that basically the...
We'll go with that one, sure.
...less polite way? The truth is that these are kids who are in trouble. These are not kids who are in trouble the way I think people here imagine. They're not kids who are going to be, you know, shooting up in your backyard. They're not kids who are going to be stealing. They're not kids who are going to be trying to commit suicide even in our houses. What they are is kids who have struggled for enough time that an educational consultant, a parent, a school has said, "These kids are not, work, these kids have not been able to make it without this," and in attempts to help them get there, they'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for being of two minds.
Christian Brown, Dutch Hill Road.
Thank you.
Hold the hand of Mike.
I don't know how to, I don't know where you're... Sorry.
It's okay.
That might help.
My question for you is, you're saying here in your paperwork that you're going to be looking for young people who struggle with a series of psychiatric issues, depression, anxiety, bipolar, and personality disorders, but you're not going to be bringing in people who don't have thirty-day sobriety, who may or may not have suicide risks. And this is a very high-end facility. And the second part of my question is, it says you're going to be drawing from the community, seventy percent from the community, is that right? From the Vermont community? My question is, is where are you going to find these residents that want to voluntarily come to the facility? Because it looks like to me you're looking for, lack of a better term, the best of the worst to come here. And where will you be drawing the volunteer residents to come here? And, you know, with the prices you're charging per day there, how is this going to be a place that's really going to be someplace a normal, middle-class person could come to? Or is this solely geared at, you know, the high class that want to get to Vermont and get out of wherever they're from and do this treatment?
Hi, Christian.
Hello, Mike.
What we say in our narrative, just to correct you, is that we anticipate approximately sixty percent of residents will come from local and out-of-state colleges, and our hope is that forty percent will be drawn from the Vermont community. And then we've listed there our major recruiting sources, one of which is Brown Road.
Actually, and if he said sixty percent, forty percent are coming from the Vermont community, then you're in error. I don't think forty percent are going to come. That was a mistake in our part. But anyway, I anticipate that most of the young adults that come from Vermont will come from the Vermont colleges. I worked at Bennington College, I've worked there now for eleven years, and every year I've sent about five students, maybe a little bit more home, who should be able, because of their cognitive abilities, because of how much they're invested, they should be able to work in the college, work at college, and because of depression or anxiety or bipolar, they can't. So it's people like that who we're hoping to draw from.
But outside of, say, the Bennington College area and other Vermont colleges, Middlebury, UVM, where else from out-of-state would you be looking to draw these people in?
There are, there are people called, well, actually, there are people called educational consultants who spend a lot of time trying to help students figure out how they're going to get most effectively to where they are, and much of our people will come through there.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that a little better with the microphone? Yes? Okay.
First off, I'd like to commend you for, for being willing to help the needy. I mean, there's no question, there's a need for that. There is a need for that. But, and this thing, not in my backyard, I'm not at all for that. I think that's the reason why we don't have zoning in this town, is because I'm going to do what I want to do in my, in my yard.
Thank you.
Pretty much, right? On the other hand...
I knew there was a that sound.
Yeah. On the other hand, I'm looking for total, being, being totally truthful with the community. Now, I haven't gone over your narrative, but I've heard, what I've heard is, a dollar ten for each meal? If your CPA made that out, is a dollar ten, dollar fifty, whatever it is, here at the school, it costs three fifty to feed a child at noon time. I don't know how in the world you're going to feed an adult for a dollar, dollar, dollar fifty. That's number one. So, I'm just looking for total honesty. I don't think you're going to make the five hundred, five hundred thousand dollar threshold. I don't think it's possible. I just don't think it's possible, and I don't, whatever CPA you have, I need to hire him myself, because he does a good job with the numbers.
And what I will tell you is that, again, it is our ethical and legal responsibility to have the Green Mountain Care Board review it if we think we're even coming close. So we will be reviewing that, we will be reviewing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, of course.
I just want to add to that. Our CPA calculated these numbers. They're going to change when the program opens its doors and admits residents and its staff come on, and as those numbers change, we'll report them to the Green Mountain Care Board. If at any time we hit that threshold, we'll do the certificate of need process. We were required to do that. But it was difficult for our CPA, you know, three months in advance of us opening, three-plus months in advance of us opening our doors, to project all of the expenses.
Yes, you may ask a follow-up?
I absolutely agree that it is difficult, but I don't think it's too difficult to figure out that you can't feed an adult for a dollar fifty a meal. I think any CPA in the world could tell you that you can't feed an adult for a dollar fifty a meal. I can't buy a hot dog and a soda for that.
I agree.
I'm Don Nichols, 669 Corey Hill Road. I live on that end of town. I'm going to ask one question to the audience. If you're in favor of this, raise your hand. Do you see any hands out there? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It seems to me that everybody in town heard about it after you were already here and were doing it. You never came to the community and asked what they would have thought. My family's been here my whole life. I just think that you were sneaky, and there's no way to win in this town. They can all put a four-by-eight sheet of plywood in their front yard and paint it orange and write on it, "You're not welcome," and there's nothing you can do in this town because we don't have zoning, and it seems like the majority of Colvin Hill doesn't want you here. And if I was driving my kid up and I had to read every one of them signs before I came, it might want to ask you, "Why here?" I mean, I'm on that side of the town. I don't have to see it, but they all do. They're the ones you have to deal with every day. And I worked for a bunch of them, and they didn't know about it until you were already there doing it. Not very neighborly.
Do you have a question?
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry you feel that way. And thank you for the people who raised their hands. I am very grateful.
Do we have another?
Christine Shannon, 2219 Colvin Hill Road. I'm directly across the meadow from you. I look down on your building. You say these people are going to be allowed to be out until nine-thirty at night. What are they going to be doing? They can't drive a car. There's nobody up there. So what are they going to be doing at nine-thirty at night when it gets dark at eight-thirty?
I'm sorry, I, it's, I, they have spoken. It's the people who are going to work that can come out, who have a curfew at nine-thirty. Everyone else will be in the house with us, or doing chores or doing other things. But the people who have a curfew are the people who are in town working or in the community working.
So the residents will be locked into the building?
No, no one will be locked in.
Where will they be?
They'll be in the...
They'll be in the building. And how will you be sure they don't get out of the building?
We have a security system in place, and we'll have staff who are residents.
Is this perimeter around the property or just on the building?
A security system is, I'm sorry, why don't I have the question?
Well, is the security in the building, is there just an alarm on the building, or is there going to be perimeter on the property?
There will not be alarms on the property. There'll be perimeter.
So if someone were to go out a door, they could just walk off the property? Well, I want to tell you that I have four grandchildren who may never come up here again because of this facility, and I am more than livid about it.
I could understand that, I would be...
No, no, you don't understand it. That's the problem. You just don't understand where you are. This is the middle of nowhere in Vermont. There's no services. There's no hospital, there's no doctor. Sometimes there's no plowing if there's too much snow. We've been snowing for three or four days. So...
Do you have another question?
No.
No. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Keating, Colvin Hill Road. You spoke about your security system. I'd like to know a little bit more in detail what type of a security system it is. I read your narrative, and I did not see a line for that in the narrative, and I know that security systems are pretty expensive. Wondering about the inside security, the outside security, and the personnel security of your facility.
I cannot speak to my security system because I am actually not the one putting it in place. I'll have to talk about this.
We haven't installed it yet. We haven't chosen a security system yet.
So we don't have an answer on that?
No.
When can we get an answer on that?
I don't know.
Okay. Seems a lot of unanswered questions tonight, and it doesn't bode well for a lot of people.
Hi, I'm Chip Wright from Colvin Hill Road, down the road, about a half a mile from where the facility is going to be. And I was, wanted to follow up a little bit on Brian's comments and Dan's comments relative to issues in the budget, and certainly, you know, it was highlighted in my thinking how you're going to feed people on the minimal amount that you have allowed here. And one of the things that Brian brought up, and I can't remember exactly which one it was, but the only answer he got was a rather cavalier, "Well, the CPA did it." Well, the CPA has done a lot of things here that just don't seem to make sense, financial sense. We've got a couple items here, homeowner's insurance, liability insurance, taxes, real estate taxes, and maintenance. And you look through these things, and building and repair maintenance, you got nothing on there for three years. Property taxes, there's nothing there. Now, perhaps they're incorporated in the lease. That I don't know, it doesn't really say. There's no footnotes here. Homeowner's insurance, I don't know. You have an item up here under staffing expenses for professional insurance, ten thousand, eleven thousand, eleven thousand, two fifty. Is, that, I would think your liability insurance would be way, way, for this type of business, way, way over that.
Actually, it is not. That I do know, because I pay that. In terms of the other insurance, we are at least with, we do not own the property, so some of that is paid by the owner of the property.
One other question you have down here somewhere in your papers, forty dollars an hour for an addiction specialist. Why, if there are no drugs, you know, people addicted to drugs, why would you need an addiction specialist?
That is actually a change. You're not going to have an addiction specialist, but one of the things that is so important as you treat young adults is that, as you know, young adults are faced with many, many issues and often are tempted by things. We want to make sure that people are very, are taught about addiction issues from the very start. We will have people learning about addiction, and having groups on addiction, even though we will not have anyone actively...
Yeah. If you look at the narrative, the addiction specialist is as needed...
Yeah, sure.
...and it's off-site. So they wouldn't be employing anyone at Pats. It would be through a community mental health center.
So if there was...
If those services are needed.
If they were needed by... If they were needed by somebody at the facility, they would be treated off-site? They would be taken somewhere else to be treated?
That's right.
Okay, okay. All right. Uh, there seem to be a lot of loose ends and misinformation that, uh, as, you know, questions have come up here that make people a little leery and a little concerned in addition to the safety and the health and the welfare and all that other stuff. So, we, we are definitely concerned. Thank you.
John Girado, uh, Hydrich, that's right off of Colvin Hill. I'm interested in, what are the qualifications of the security people that you mentioned you were about to hire?
I don't think we said we were gonna hire a security person.
Didn't you say we were gonna have two security people? A security system? And is this an electronically run system, a robot, not a person?
Yes.
Okay. I, I lived on this road for twenty-five years. It's very remote and I couldn't wish for better neighbors. I feel secure, safe. I've had two real emergencies and my neighbors have come to my aid. I don't know who my new neighbors are gonna be and I'm gonna be very honest with you. I'm not just a little bit concerned. I'm scared as hell about who's gonna be walking up my driveway. I have eighteen grandchildren and at night, there are no lights, there's no police patrolling, there's nobody out looking out for whoever's on the road. I don't know, and you haven't really satisfied my anxiety about, are these people really a potential danger to themselves or others? In fact, could I ask a double question here? Could you, in layman's terms, please describe to us just what kind of treatments are gonna be dealt out to the psychological disorders? Try to explain that in layman's terms.
I can try to do that and actually, I will, so I'll tell you a person who, about a person, change so that no one could do the mic. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I moved too much. So, I will tell you about a person who is actually looking about at our facility.
April, I was a teacher. Can I just play teacher for a bit? Slow down, slow down, so everybody can hear everything you have to say. Thank you.
So, I'm gonna give you an example of one of our students or residents who are coming. And I'm actually saying we're student because this is somebody who is working with me right now, who, um, and again, it is a change because confidentiality is so, so important. So, the kind of person, the person I'm looking at right now who's considering coming to our program is a young adult. She is nineteen. She has finished her first year at college. And four months ago, while, in having, while at college, she started having significant depression. This was a kid who was top of her class up until that time. And because of her depression, she was unable to get out of bed. She was unable to go to classes. And the last one of the things, or actually a good thing about it is that part of being in college is going to your local school. So, this kid who had been getting straight A's before, um, dropped out, well, or took a medical leave from school and went home where she got some treatment. Came back to school and is doing somewhat better. However, her ability to concentrate, her ability to attend, her ability to feel as she did when she first started in school, um, and her ability to get good grades has dropped tremendously. At this point, she decided that she wanted to think about more further treatment. These are the kinds of people we are taking. We are not talking about people who are in need of a hospital. If they need to go to a hospital, they need to be in a hospital. So...
Am I to take that as there's no potential danger to themselves or others? Every one of your patients?
What I will tell you is that, as you know, no, I cannot say, promise you that mistakes are ever made. The people we are taking have as much, are, are not, we have screened for danger to self and other. We are not taking people who are...
Do you mind if I ask then, why would it take a three-month or a six or an eight-month program?
Because in order to learn how to do a job, you need to have time to practice it.
Is this a vocational rehab?
That's what I said. Yes, it is vocational rehabilitation.
Okay. One last question. This is kinda personal. How, how will you respond if and when property values of your neighbors have an adverse impact and they, they decline? Have, how would that make you feel? I think we wanna know just how you feel about that.
Again, I am, I am very, very sorry that we live in a world in which property values would go down because of a program like this. That's all I can say.
But, don't you understand? That's, that's a pretty flippant answer. These people, so many of them, I know I'm in the category. My whole life is in my, my property and in my home. Without that, I have nothing. And if I go, 'cause I'm no youngster, my wife is gonna be stuck with a piece of property and it's not gonna be worth much at all. Now, and, and, you know, if you doubt what I'm saying, when's the last time you've heard of an advertisement for a house for sale? Pay attention, we're close to a rehab facility. That's gonna up the value, right of the house?
I, I hear your concerns.
Well, how, how are you gonna deal with it? That's, that's what we're looking at. We're, we're frightened for our financial security and for our safety. I mean, have you ever been up there at night? It's pitch black. There's not one light. There's no cops running around. There are no vigilante groups. What happens if one of your patients get out of hand? And, you know, they, they've made mistakes before. There's, there's no guarantee that they're not gonna make mistakes again.
John, I think your last question was, "What happens if somebody gets out of hand?" Let's answer that question and then move on. Nope. Let's, let's, if April would please answer that question, we'll move on.
Thank you. We do have, um, emergency procedures in place. Again, we are not anticipating that people are gonna get out of hand in the way that you're describing. However, we do have staff who are trained in dealing with these kind of emergencies. I need another drink of water. It's all my business to you.
You can do that while we see who's next at the microphone. Do we have anybody else with a question?
I'm Annie Davis and I live at two nine eight one Colvin Hill Road. And...
Step up to the microphone.
Thank you. I have some question. You're going to get some livestock?
Yes.
Um, when are you getting the livestock?
We have three goats now.
Where are the goats living?
Oh, they're not, they're not at the, at the facility.
Okay. And what else are you getting for livestock? I mean, this, you listed as part of the therapeutic care.
Yes.
That there would be a garden and livestock chores.
Yes. We are, we have three goats, ten chickens, two pot-bellied pigs. And we may be getting, um, some mini, some minis. We were, we initially were going to get some horses, but decided that that's not a good idea for that.
Well, i- it's interesting. It's kind of like your food and recreation budget for your residences is not much and it's also not much for your animals. My second question is, when do you plan on opening up and actually having people?
Um, at this point, we are aiming for July fif- July first.
So, you're gonna have a garden on site for these people to work in, in July first? And you're going to have facilities for these animals? This is gonna happen in the next six weeks?
Yes.
I'd be rather surprised. I don't know if anyone else wants to address that. I mean, who's, I certainly know what veterinarian bills are and I, this is not a sustainable budget for people or for animals.
Again, we, um, we're working with the Green Mountain Care Board and if we need to, we can come.
Well, I, I mean, I think you need to be talking to the Green Mountain Care Board now, not later.
Uh, my name is Dick Palmer. I live on Colvin Hill Road. Um, I, I was, I attended your, uh, open house and I appreciate it, that, that fact. It almost seems like, April, this is a horse and pony show. Because we are not getting specific answers. A number of people tonight have asked you specific questions. It would be of you or your attorney and you really have just pushed them aside or said it's the accountant. Please tell us here tonight how you are gonna feed somebody on a dollar thirty-nine and you're gonna buy, you're gonna get your food from a nearby restaurant, ten or twenty miles away?
That has actually changed. We are not doing that. We will be cooking, um, in-house.
Okay. Now, how can you feed somebody for a dollar thirty-nine?
I've answered this several times and I'm not gonna be answering this question more than I do.
You're not answering the question?
I'm not answering. I, I, I've answered this as, as best I can, so I have...
Well, you're not answering the question. The other question that was raised because of those of us who live on Colvin Hill or the surrounding roads is security. You really have not given us a specific answer on the security as well. You're thinking about a security system, but you don't have it. Now, we wanna know what you're thinking about security. Because there are a number, there are two or three people in this audience who have dealt with, with the type of clients that you're gonna have. And when they get out of hand, a hundred and seventy-five pound person can take on two or three or four adults like they are, like they are ping pong balls if they get out of hand. So, I don't know what you're gonna do in a situation like that and I don't know where you're gonna get help. 'Cause your neighbors aren't gonna run home over there and help you. It's a dangerous situation.
I absolutely agree.
The police can't get there in time. They won't get there in time because they, they don't respond. A number of us have tried the sheriff. A number of us over the years have tried the state police. It doesn't happen. So, you have a rude awakening. 'Cause if you have an emergency, you have a major problem and you're on your own. That's a fact. So, you haven't answered our questions thoroughly. Now, as far as, um, the situation as mentioned before, John Girado said about the taxes. Your facility is going to affect the taxes in the people in the Colvin Hill and maybe a little bit of surrounding area. If those people grieve their taxes like we expect that they will do, and you know who's gonna get the burden of that? The balance of the town. Many of the townspeople don't understand that. Because if the, if the, the, the people in Colvin Hill at the moment pay one-third of the total taxes in the town of Dambie. Now, if they were to be grossly reduced as a result of your facility, what happens? The balance of the town has to pick that up. So, what's happening is not only you're affecting those of us who live in Colvin Hill, you're affecting the entire town of Dambie.
Is there a question in there, Dick, or we should...
Okay. Now, I gotta, I got another question.
Well, we have one follow-up question. Let's make sure everybody else has a chance first and then you...
I have a question. I, I'm, I'm not finished. I'm not finished. I have a few things to...
Would people like to see their spot to him?
Okay.
But, Dick, it's important to ask questions.
I'm gonna ask questions and I have a statement, followed by a statement. You have a septic situation there that is not approved by the, by the state of Vermont. There is a septic for the main house, but there's no septic for the little house. We're aware of that and you're aware of it. What are you gonna do about it?
That is, that is the truth. There's a separate septic system for the cottage.
Okay. And what is it? 'Cause it's not filed with the state of Vermont.
We have, we have complied and are continuing to comply with all permitting regulations for septic and wastewater.
I don't think so. Some of our people...
We have no further comment.
Okay. Again, there you are. You're passing the puck. Now, you should be ashamed of yourself. For a person who has your credentials and your professional experience, try to sneak into Dambie under the radar. This is not a sleepy little town. And where you come in and you expected to do a slam dunk. The people of Dambie are wise. They're down-to-earth. They're honest and they can count on their neighbors. Your actions have alienated the entire town. You have falsified your application to the, to the Green Mountain Board. And you not only, you're to, to fly under the radar, just be under the five hundred thousand dollar situation, so you don't have to go for a significant certificate of need, but there is no way that you're gonna be able to, to adhere to that. People of your caliber are not gonna work for nothing, even though this is your dream. There are no salaries in there for substantial people. Now...
Dick, I think all those points have been made and I'd like to be sure.
Now, wait a minute. I'm, I got, I got two more sentences. Now, what, not only have you jeopardized the health, the safety, and the welfare of the people of Dambie, you have also falsified and your application to the Green Mountain Board and jeopardized them as well. You have. You have jeopardized them as well. And they will continue to know, they'll be informed as to what's going on here. Now, your apology to us is not accepted. You are not the model of a person that we wanna call neighbor.
I'd like us to please remember that, um, April and our colleagues are here voluntarily and it's a very difficult position to be in. I understand that it's difficult for people too. But let's make our point, but, but try not to hammer people, if you will.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Eric Stone, one hundred Whiskey Hill Road. So, question in two parts. First is simple math. So, at approximately twenty thousand per person per month, is that an accurate number? Sorry. Twenty thousand per patient per month, is that roughly accurate?
It is.
Times eight, max, times twelve. One point nine million. And your operating budget is what?
I don't, I don't think that's right. The, the, the fee per day is different in tier one than it is in tier two or tier three.
Okay. I'll, I'll look at that further. That's an awfully big delta. Second thing, I'm a disaster recovery specialist. Do you have a disaster recover? Do you have a disaster recovery plan? Have you thought through your various contingencies, health, security, et cetera? Is such a plan gonna be published so we can read it and feel better about it? That would be really helpful. Thank you.
Did you have an answer to that?
I, I do, actually. Uh, one of the components of the application with the Division of Licensing and Protection is our emergency plan, which details what, uh, our policies and procedures are in the case of, uh, fire, flood, loss of power and otherwise. Um, so, we're developing those in conjunction with the licensing agency. Six weeks and you're still developing them? Thank you.
Well, let's, let me just see, Brian, since you're coming around again, let me just check to see if anybody else has any questions. Let's, let's take this gentleman first.
My name's Greg Eaton. I don't live on Colvin Hill. I didn't come here with a, either way, yes or no, or for or against, looking for information. I guess the only, I guess what I have to say in the question would be is, usually when you're, to me, when you're proud or confident in what you're doing, the projects you're supporting, I just don't, I wanna know why you wouldn't have come to the select board, the people who are responsible kind of for governing the town. I, that's the only question I have. Like, how, why wouldn't you come to the town ahead of time and just say, "This is a program"? If you're proud of it, that's fine. And you're, and you, obviously you're passionate about it and I understand that. But I just don't get why you wouldn't have come to the town first.
You know, I, I'm embarrassed to say that this was frankly a question of understanding town politics. We went to the, um, town clerk's office and they told us that we were doing what we had to. So, we did put it better than the newspaper. Um, so, so this was not, this was not meant to be hiding from there, but...
I'd rather, that's a pretty basic, I guess. It just doesn't give you confidence in what you sit here and tell me, I guess, when I hear. I don't, it doesn't really give you more confidence than if you're opening July first. I just would think there's a lot more information provided to the public and that's all I have to say. to the public, and that's all I have to say.
I'm Tom Shannon, your neighbor across the street. I just have one question. Most of my other questions have already been addressed. Does Bennington College know that you are referring their students to your for-profit business in Danby? It does not seem ethical to me.
Bennington College is aware that I am starting this, yes. And I'm not referring any patient individually. I was giving a...
I have heard...
Bennington, okay.
Excuse me. I have heard a third of what you've spoken about.
I apologize.
And slow down and put that microphone two inches from your map. Okay?
Bennington College is aware that I am starting this program. I will not refer any patient to my...or am doing anything on it.
One other question. You talked about serving our community, meaning Vermont. And you used as an example of this, the number of students that you could conceivably refer from Bennington College a year, perhaps five.
I was giving...
How many of those students would be residents of Vermont? There's very few residents of Vermont from Bennington College. In effect, I suspect that the number of your clients that are going to come from out of state is much greater than you're leading us to believe. I'm done.
So I've been watching that clock, and I think that clock is wrong. Is it, in fact, 8:15?
Yes.
So much for good timekeeping. I would like to see if you all have any questions based on this for the audience. And I think there's been a lot of back and forth, so perhaps those have been answered, but...
You know, I am so shocked at this point that I'm not sure I could ask a coherent answer, but I apologize.
Okay.
No, I don't have any questions. I... The only comment I'd like to make is that I know some of you don't agree with this, but we came here in good faith. Our goal was to be good neighbors. We still intend to be excellent neighbors. We are not intending on trespassing on anyone's property. We will have staff there 24/7. We will have an eye on our clients. This is a very, very small group of people, not really unlike a large family actually living in the house, comparatively speaking. So that's the only comment I have to make, and I echo what April's already said in that, is that we didn't come here with the intent on making anyone angry, and we honestly didn't really expect this reaction. Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Brian, I see that you want to speak...I see that you want...well...
Just a follow-up to my question.
And is it a...
I was waiting to hear the answer.
Yeah, is it a question that we haven't heard already? Because I...
Actually, it's a clarification of an answer. When I asked you about the budget, you kept referring to the Green Mountain Care Board reviewed it and found it to be okay. Our state representative, Patty Comline, spoke to the chair of the Green Mountain Care Board, Al Gobel, I guess his name is. And he indicated to her that they don't care about the budget. They are not even concerned about the numbers. Because if there's an issue, well, they'll correct it later. Okay, that's number one. Your budget is a fraud. It's fraudulent. You cannot do what you're saying in this narrative for that number. So that's plain and simple. You signed off on that, okay? You're septic. I have correspondence, which I will gladly forward to you if you hand me your email, from the state, that says that the guest house does not have a wastewater permit. And the house, the main house, has a septic permit for seven residents only, seven or less. So 10 is more than seven, I think. So if you give me your email, I will send you this information. But like I said, this whole thing is smoke and mirrors. Thank you.
I have a stack of business cards. I'm going to leave them right on the table, and I would welcome anyone who has follow-up questions to send me an email or a call. I'm happy to answer them to the best of my ability. You may not be satisfied with the answers. They may be the same answers that you've heard tonight, but I will address each and every one of your concerns, okay?
Thank you all for participating, and I'd like to thank April and her colleagues for being willing to come here and answer our questions to the best of their ability. Thank you, and good night.